Good morning Butterfield Trail Village. Would you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Go Hawks. I like you. Memorial Day is a federal holiday held on the last Monday in May and it is the nation's foremost annual day to mourn and honor its deceased servicemen and servicewomen. Originally called Decoration Day, it was formalized by a Memorial Day order issued by Grand Army of the Republic Commander-in-Chief, John Logan, in 1868. How many of you have gone with your families on Decoration Day to the cemeteries and then had a picnic? Yeah, I'll be going Sunday and we'll get wet. But that's okay. It's a good time for families to come together to honor our servicemen and women as well as the others buried in the same location that are our family and friends. So I do hope you have a safe Memorial Holiday. I also want to recognize and thank our veterans, servicemen and women here today. If you're a veteran, will you please stand? Thank you so much for your service. Quick announcements, I'm working on a new policy and procedure that'll be issued June 1 regarding the use of the lodge. It's for all resident hosted groups, the bigger groups. Parking has continually been an issue and these policies will offer options to ensure that our campus is following fire codes while retaining daily conveniences for our residents who have nothing to do with these large groups. The policies and procedures will become a part of the room reservation form that the resident host is to fill out and bring to myself or Michael. And so you can share that with the civic group people ahead of time and they'll know what's expected as they visit our campus. We're glad to have them, but it's something we just have to have a few rules once in a while and I think it'll work out best for everyone. Okay, so I want to recognize and thank all of our Butterfield gardeners who participated in the Spring Garden Tour. Thank you so much. If you missed it, you can go next year because we've decided we're gonna make it an annual event. So I appreciate everyone getting the gardens beautified and ready for everybody to tour around and see. Another friendly reminder that when we have events that require a head count, particularly if it has to do with food, please, please sign up and write it down so when it comes around to that time of the month, you know that you did sign up. We have to order food in advance, usually a week in advance. And I do my best to accommodate people who didn't look at their calendar, who forgot to sign up, if I can, but sometimes I can't. So it really helps Memo and myself figure out how many meals we need to have available to the group. It's just a friendly reminder and I appreciate that. All right, you should be getting your June calendars next week. I have a lot of stuff going on in June. I'm just gonna touch on a couple of things and then I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Kevin. I've contacted Tyson Foods and I have a guided tour of the research development and test kitchen at Tyson Foods. It's right next to the corporate office in Springdale. And they're gonna talk to us about their products, how they come up with the products they offer, why they change stuff, why they discontinue things. So it's gonna be a very educational program. I expect a large crowd for this. They can only take 20 people per tour, so I've scheduled two. That's a total of 40 residents that might want to go hear about chicken. And I'm not including a field trip to a chicken house, just in case you were wondering. The date is Wednesday, the 4th of June, or Thursday, the 5th. You could take your pick. We'll be leaving at 9:00 in the morning. Memo and I are hosting a summer hamburger and hot dog cookout on Wednesday, the 11th, here in the Performance Hall, just because we never know what the weather's gonna do. And so come by and get you a really good grilled burger. Then, let's see, I have a classical concert on Thursday night, the 12th with Slade Trammell. Slade is a beautiful pianist. He is so talented and he's been to Butterfield before. If you've never heard Slade, please come support him. He is a wonderful artist. We'll be doing a trip to Harbor Village Museum in Grove, Oklahoma. Bernis and Harvey Jones dedicated this several acre museum, outdoor walking tour museum, to have displays of all things that are Northwest Arkansas and the surrounding states' history from the early 1800s to the mid 1900s. So I hope you can go for that and we'll have a picnic lunch. We're gonna do the picnic lunch. You order your meal in the bistro to take with you, or you can bring your own picnic lunch. That's gonna be Friday, June 13th. Let's see, we're gonna visit the Philbrook Museum in Tulsa to see the Japanese Samuraya armor exhibit. I've heard it is beautiful. And then we're gonna swing around and have dinner at the Cheesecake Factory before we come home. Yeah, I'm excited to welcome back Jan Gosnell, giving another resident lecture series. He will be focusing on his art, his graphic art through the years for various different opportunities he had with magazines, books. And he's very talented, so I hope you can come here. His lecture on Thursday, the 19th at 2:30. One last thing I want to point out, you probably got a little snippet in the recent magazine, but we are so pleased to welcome back Natasha Korsakova, the international violinist, who will be here on Thursday, the 26th. We'll have a pre-concert order social in the lobby, so we hope you can join us for that. I'm gonna be able to allow a few resident guests and Carriage Club will be taking a head count and see how the numbers go. They do have to pay if they wanna attend the order social. So the information will be in your June schedule. All right, are there any questions for programs, transportation, reception? Oh, sorry, Philbrook is on Wednesday, the 18th. All right, yes. Thank you. Last night's blues party was awesome. And I just, I know, Nick, you busted some moves I've never seen. You were awesome. All right, have a wonderful Memorial Weekend, everyone.
All right, good morning. Thank you for rearranging your schedules for this morning. There are a lot of things to go over and I know we didn't meet this past for the resident forum, so there's a lot of things I wanted to go over with you and I wanted to get this information out as soon as possible. So some old business, the cell phones. We know we're still having cellphone issues. We have a company coming to do a patch for AT&amp;T users and so that should help with them. Hopefully another solution coming for Verizon users, but we still, I tell you that to tell you that we are continuing to work on that and we will continue to work on that until it is a better service for you. Wifi, we are still gaining quotes from wifi companies. We're exploring different options, how we want that to look and what options we need to come with that. We've interviewed three, four different companies, so we're continuing to do that, just so you know. We know that's something that you want us to improve on and so we are still working on that. The elevator in the north atrium is scheduled to be delivered on June, the 16th. Delivery should start a week later, I mean installation should start a week later than that, we're told. So I will keep you updated as we know, but as of right now, I got an update yesterday from Otis and they said it would be here June, the 16th. The cottage erosion, that project will start next week with the erosion mats to go behind the cottages. Exterior building paint, as we discussed last week, or last month. Sherwin-Williams is coming with a digital layout to let you see the campus in different colors and the different colors of the building. Once we have that, we'll of course get your input on that. We'll have the different options posted publicly so you can kinda look and see and give your input as you want to. We're gonna get three quotes for the paint and we're still waiting on those three quotes, so that'll probably be a, probably closer to July, August type project. Depending on how quickly we get the quotes in and we get everyone's feedback. The trees will be trimmed around, and I'll address more of this in just a little bit, but the trees will be trimmed around campus. We're gonna cut out all the old dead branches and that sort of thing. You'll start seeing that coming probably in the next few weeks, maybe. We're not cutting down any trees. The parking lot paint and repair will start in mid-June, so that project has been quoted and I think we're ready to move forward, so probably in the next 30 days you should start seeing the start of that project. The parking lot expansion, that will be starting soon. Right now, we're in the survey phase. So we did the topographical survey. We had the locating lines. We're doing all that work right now, so we hope to have that project started and completed by the end of August. Before I get on to the AL expansion, which I really wanted to talk about, I'll have a PowerPoint for you. The rumors of Butterfield, so bringing that back. Rumors have kinda quietened down for a while, but they've kinda come back up. We are not cutting down the birch trees on the south side of the campus. I know this comes up at least once a week. We are not cutting down those birch trees. We will trim the dead branches, but we are not cutting down the birch trees. So once you hear that, tell them that is not true. We're not cutting down the birch trees. We will update the front entrance. That's a project where Adam and I actually walked the campus on Tuesday and we're trying to get ideas and what do we want that to look like? And there's still a lot of discussion to go in. I did not deny that project. We have not got a design idea for that project. So if you hear that I have, administration has denied that project, that is not true. That project has not been presented yet. The landscape budget has never been cut. It has never been denied. No project for landscaping has ever been denied unless it involved cutting down a tree. So if you hear that their budget has been cut, decreased, that is not true at all. The raised beds, the raised beds were put on hold because the designs were, the group did not like the designs, so we put that on hold until the next season. It was too late in the year to change out because they'd missed this growing season, so that project got put on hold till next year. That is an approved project. It will get done. We're just waiting on the design idea. And a little disclaimer, anytime you hear anything that doesn't sound true, just please call me or email me or text me or just ask me and I'd love to clear it up before it turns into a rumor. All right, now for the most exciting thing that really wanted to discuss with you and really get the word out was the assisted living expansion project that we have. And so we wanna bring this to your attention. We wanna work toward expanding the campus and we want your input about this because your input will impact the residents for the next 40 years. And so we need to know what you need, what you would want to make it comfortable and a home-like space for years to come. And so what we've done, and Kelly put this together, we wanna hear from you. So we have an app and I'll show you the QR code and we'll have it posted when we leave this meeting, but a way for the residents to give feedback in different areas, the things that you feel are important, that you would want if you lived out there. So some, a couple of things is, you'll see on the survey are the common areas. And so what we're looking for is your input. What do you want the common areas to look like? Do you want TVs, fireplaces? What types of couches, chairs? Be as detailed as you wanna be. We're gonna include all your input. Do you want private patios? Do you want, what do the patios look like? Those type of things. Outdoors, do we want an outdoor fireplace, gazebos, raised beds, water features? Do you want outdoor dining options? And what does that look like? Is it screened-in outdoor dining? Is it open dining? Is it, what does that look like? The indoor amenities, which could be many things. So we're looking at, of course, we want multipurpose rooms, but what does that look like? What would you like in a multipurpose room? Would you like a craft room? Do you want library, media rooms? Do you, you know, some of the pictures we've seen and one of the architects just did down in Marco Island was like a movie room, like a large screen and you have movie-type chairs around? Or do we want chairs that move? Do you wanna use that space for, maybe have an exercise class over there? Or different options? What are you looking for exactly? And what interests you is what we really wanna know. So there's all kinds of feedback in there that you can leave, so, and we want it all. So what we're gonna do is, your input will directly influence the decision, so we wanna, what we'll do is we'll take all of your information, everything that's given, and we put it in what's called a program and the program goes to the architect. And the architect does their best to include all of it into the, to the design of the building as best we can. And the feedback will be anonymous unless you choose to put your name, and I wish you would, leave your name because I'd like, if it needs a follow-up or if you wanna explain further. And you can always schedule a meeting with me if you have something you're passionate about that you would like to discuss, but of course you can always call, text, or email. The survey, you'll be able to take on your computer, smart device, or you can have a paper copy. I know we still have people that like paper copies, so you're welcome to do that. So that's what the QR code looks like and so you could take your phone down. You could take a picture of that and, or zoom into it and that's how you can go straight to the survey. But it'll also be posted around the campus, so you can find it in many different places. You can also request a hard copy at the front reception desk and you can complete it and return it to the same location. And so this is what it looks like on each one of the options there. You'll see the posters out and I think, I'm looking at one right now. There's one right outside the door and that's what the app looks like and there's also the paper copy. If you know someone that needs a paper copy, we can take them a paper copy. You're welcome to come get them a paper copy. We want everyone's feedback. All right, so that was a brief overview. I figured we may have some questions, so what questions can I answer about that? Yes, sir. Roy's asking about the economics of the expansion. So the finance committee and the board are discussing that now and so once we have a finance option, then we'll present that to the group. There's a lot of different options, so we've heard presentations from several different, about several different options, so. Yes, sir? So Dennis is asking if we have a footprint, so we have, we have a very rough sketch, I would call it. What we'll do is, is complete this program. So all of your input and the input from us will be sent to the architect and then they'll come up with a more detailed plan. The plan we have now is gonna change. Right now, it would be useless to show because there's really... Once we have all this input in, we'll have a better plan to show you. The architect's gonna be here on June 2nd and 3rd on-site and we're gonna walk the campus and start getting some ideas. And as soon as they have a plan put together, then they're gonna come in person and present to this group and you'll be welcome to ask the architect any questions that you'd like. Ma'am? So the design right now is, she asked if it was more than one-story. Is two-story? We'll have an elevator, two elevators. Two elevators. Brand new, should last 37 years. Should be good. But like I said, that's just the initial design, so that could change as well, so. But we, what we really wanna do with this building is why we want your input. We want this to be exactly what you would want if you lived out there. We want it to be first-class. We want it to be beautiful. We want to have all the things that you expect when you come to Butterfield, right? We wanna do it right the first time. We get one swing at it, so let's do it right the first time and make it perfect for the next 40 years. So any other questions? All right, well please, fill out the survey. We want all your input and then once we have more information, you will know. I'll update you whenever we have, the architect's able to come back. Kim, he didn't give us a date when he's coming back to present that, did he? He'll definitely wanna wait until we have a true plan or a tentative plan. It'll continue to change somewhat throughout, but it also gives us the option, or the option, it's gonna give us the chance to move our business office back over here and, because it'll go out there and the marketing team will move to the new space too, so. But you'll see, we'll have pictures and ideas. One thing I didn't mention that I think is one of the more important things out there is the third dining option. So we'll have a third dining option that everyone is welcome to use and the idea right now is more of a cava-type menu and Memo's come up with a great menu. Fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, salad, spring rolls, that type of food. Because that's what you've requested. When we got the survey, that's what you want. You want the fresh food. You want the healthy food. And that's gonna be what that dining option is. And so there will be a large enough dining space for residents and for our residents at AL and our residents here. And there'll also be an outdoor, the way we have it drawn now, we expect to have an outdoor dining space. And what that looks like, we don't know. Is it screened-in? Is it covered? It'll definitely be covered with fans, but is it screened-in? Is it, what does it look like is what we don't know. So that's what I want your input for. We'll make sure they have it out. We'll make sure, yes, thank you. We'll make sure the AL residents have the code. We'll make sure they have plenty of paper copies to fill that out. And I will also have a meeting with them, and Vicky's setting that up for me, a meeting specifically with that group to get their feedback since they live out there. They know. Yes, ma'am? So the statement was, do we, do you need to go out there and see what's out there? Yes, I would welcome you to go out there and take a look at what they have. Things we do know is they, you know, they just have a warming kitchen. We're gonna have to have a kitchen out there for them. We know their washer and dryer space is too small and that's gonna have to be larger. We're looking at potentially, the rooms will be a little bigger in the new part than they are now. Not a lot, but just a little bit. And hopefully by that design, we can create more storage space because we know they need more storage space out there. The rooms will be designed with patios. We'd like to see the ground floor to have patios. There'll be some rooms that open up to the garden area. So the garden right now is maybe 1,500 square feet. We're looking to go to about 5,000 or 6,000 square feet in the garden, in the courtyard out there. Because that's what you want. That's what I heard from you. You want more outdoor space, outdoor dining space, outdoor gathering space, and those type of things. Some of the things they mentioned out there that they, you know, they wanted to, the complaint out there is now, so they have a TV in their living room. There's people that complain that they can't visit because the TV's too loud and so with this option, we can go with a separate TV room or we could do something like that and just have a fireplace seating area, living room-type design. And that's one of the ideas. So give us feedback on that. But it's really exciting. I mean, we really wanna do this, do this right to where when you go out there, you'll be, you'll just be wowed when you walk in there. That's the goal. The landscaping will be beautiful. Everything will be, it'll be first-class, so. Yes, ma'am? Yeah, she asked if it'll have its own kitchen, so it will have to have its own kitchen because right now, we're having to take food up there. That was one of the designs that didn't get included was the, you know, and we can't, that's too much food to haul back and forth, so it will definitely have a full kitchen. And the kid, there'll be, there'll be a kitchen, enough kitchen space to support the AL residents and also the new dining room. And the dining room, the new, I mean the new cafe, the new cafe, we'll have a lot of buffet-type space, so you know, it's raw vegetables. We have, we have some examples and some pictures. It looks really good. The architects really were impressed with kinda what Memo put together. He did a really good job of kinda, kinda letting him design it and, but it's pretty exciting. He's pretty excited about it too, so. Yes, ma'am? So right now, you know, we're licensed for 32. We only have 15 now. We're looking at the potential to go to 54. Because that's a recommendation from, based on a campus the size of ours, 420 residents, typically you have about 50 beds in an assisted living for 400 people. Right now, we have a waiting list of 12 to 14 and that's just the ones we know of and there could be more. And what we, what the goal is, is that when you move out there, it's not like, not like you're depressed by having to move out there. You're moving out there to this great new space and this beautiful room with all these options and it's really no different than living here, except you're getting assistance out there, so. That's our goal. That way, you won't have to come over here if you don't want to because you'll have your own dining options, you have your own media rooms, your craft rooms, your whatever you'd like out there. Oh, yes, ma'am? Yeah, and that's something we can definitely improve on. There's no way to attach the buildings at this point. But yeah, so we talked about different options and we'll have a better option for you to, maybe it's routine or maybe it's scheduled transportation or something like that. There's a better way we could do transportation. And once we have that many residents out there, we'll have to be more scheduled. If it takes hiring someone specifically that that's their job is to go back and forth. So if anyone in AL wants to come here, then they just have to call currently, but I understand. You don't wanna feel like it's an inconvenience or that. It should just be routine or, yeah. And, well, yeah, that's a great comment and so we'll make note of that too as we design the building. Anything else? All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am? It's open mic, so. That's exactly right. Gary, Gary and I met Monday or Tuesday and that's exactly what it would do, yes. Anywhere on campus, right Gary? Anywhere on campus. I could be sitting right here. I could send it to my printer in my office or wherever. Anywhere indoors, there you go. Anywhere indoors, so. Landscape committee getting complimented on the grass management. Yes, thanks. And so with this option, we can go with a separate TV room or we could do something like that and just have a fireplace seating area, living room type design. And that's one of the ideas. So give us feedback on that. But it's really exciting, I mean, we really want to do this, do this right to where when you go out there, you'll be, you'll just be wowed when you walk in there. That's the goal. The landscaping will be beautiful, everything will be, it'll be first-class.